Good evening and welcome to the March 6th Board of Education meeting at the Chappaqua Central School District, at the High School Academic Commons. Do I have a motion? We've been in executive session since 5:00 PM seeking legal advice. Do I have a motion to bring us back to public session at 8:00 or 7:46?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance led by Jane Shepherdson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So first of all, I welcome everybody back after a nice winter break, and I thought we were finished with winter, but surprised we're not. So it's nice and cool out here. I know we've had, Christine will talk about a lot of the activities we've been having, but we've had a lot of sport activities, we've had some academic activities and honors there. But what I'd like to talk about right now is the revised Board of Education calendar. Christine?
Oh, yes. So on the board calendar, we had made one slight change. Next Wednesday, we had a meeting scheduled to talk about certain components of our budget, but I had requested that the Board of Education please consider moving that to a different date. I will be in Washington on a fellowship, and I also on Tuesday want to be able to go down to support our two students who are in the Regeneron competition. So the Board had agreed to have our budget process rescheduled for Monday. So we talked about that at a previous meeting, we've placed it on our website, we've communicated it out, but we actually have to officially adopt the calendar tonight that reflects that change.
That will move our board meeting from next Wednesday, the 11th, to next, or no, next Wednesday, 13th, to Monday, 11th. Do I have a motion to adopt 1.1.1, the revision of the Board of Education meeting?
I'll move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Actually, I'm sorry, though the resolution says revised 1920 in the, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Sure. It should be 1819.
Yep. Otherwise, as amended.
It is 1819. It is 1819.
Right, it says 1920.
Yeah.
So be resolved, the Board of Education adopts the revised 2018-2019 Board of Education Calendar, Meeting Calendar. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Hey, so I have a couple of things before we begin our presentations. I wanted to start by thanking Jason Simo for organizing our opening ceremony for our newly renovated and redesigned athletic facility. Last week, we were able to honor and recognize Twin Oaks and the Chappaqua School Foundation, and also thank Sports Boosters for all their efforts to help us redesign these spaces. So we have a lot of kids in them after school, and we look forward to leveraging our curriculum in a way that we've never been able to do before, based on the new facilities that we have, due to the generosity of our partnerships. I want to congratulate our 15 Greeley students who were named National Merit Scholarship finalists. All of them are featured on our website. It's such a tremendous accomplishment for our students, faculties, and families to be considered a National Merit Scholarship. For that scholarship program, there's standardized assessment criteria, and then there's another layer on top of that where you have to share your credentials as a well-rounded student, and usually less than 1% of the applicants are named as finalists, so to have 15, I mean, it's extraordinarily impressive. So I wanted to take a moment to recognize those students. I also want to congratulate our 13 seniors who were featured at the Katona Museum of Arts 36 Annual Young Artist Expedition. I was able to attend the opening event, and we had a diversity of artistic expression, from sculptures to fashion, to paintings, to photos. I mean, we had, we were well represented, so I want to congratulate our artists. I wanted to extend a congratulation to our winter sports teams for a successful season. We've had, we had many of our, many students individually, and then our team sports advanced in sectional play, so I want to congratulate all of them for all their efforts, and we've started our spring sports season, so we look forward to seeing all of our teams on the field over the course of the spring. I had asked Adam if he could talk a little bit about the work of our innovation committee. This is a partnership between us and the foundation, because we have been exploring the possibility of building an ECO lab here at Greeley, so I was hoping Adam could give just a small preview of the work we've been engaged in since the start of the school year and will be continuing.
So we continue to do research around this idea of the, exploring the viability of building an ECO lab, a 21st century greenhouse on the Greeley campus, and so we've been thinking a lot, connecting with some community partners. We've been doing some work around how it would enhance our curriculum and thinking about things that we could do in a space like this that we can't do well now, or that could be expanded through there. We made curriculum connections in areas of hydroponics, which our students are exploring now in technology classes, aquaponics, ecology, plant collections, potentially growing rare and endangered plants, native plants, plant tissue culture, science research, some connections like that. So we've been working with some teachers in the science department to explore some curricular options. At the same time, as a parallel track, we've been setting up some visits, and yesterday we were fortunate to go up to Brown University to visit their greenhouse facility, and they have a tremendous rooftop greenhouse up at Brown University, where they've divided it into six different zones. It's about 5,000 square feet. So our facility that we're thinking about wouldn't be that expensive, but it was neat to see the kind of infrastructure and also some of their curriculum that they put in place there. So just want to publicly thank Dr. Fred Jackson is their coordinator of their greenhouse up at Brown. He was very generous with his time and sharing what he's learned. He's been working in greenhouses for a long time and kind of coordinates a lot of their research up there in their greenhouse and also the facility. So it was really exciting opportunity. We went up with a team of building leaders from here at Greeley, and also Christine and myself, and some representatives from the CSF, as well as one of our professional developers and a couple of our teachers went up. So we were really impressed. We learned a lot with that greenhouse facility, so we have a long way to go, you know, a lot of steps to take before this potentially becomes a reality, but we think it's a really exciting and interesting opportunity, and could really open up a lot of curricular areas and potentially close some opportunity gap between some really exciting career fields that are out there and majors that are out there with regard to environmental science, ecology, sustainability, and all those really exciting, you know, many exciting areas of science that our kids can potentially go into, and some of them do. So we just wanted to give you that thumbnail tonight, and we'll be back shortly with more information as we go. We have a few other visits planned. Our next one is to a high school in New York City that has a rooftop greenhouse. So we really want to see some high school students in there and see some curricular connections that are being made there, so we're going to go out to Arthur Merle, I think it's Arthur Merle High School down in Brooklyn. So we're going to be doing that next, and we'll come back with more information as we collect it.
Thank you, Adam. So at this time, I'd like to invite Jamie and Adam to present some of the work that we've been engaged in around kindergarten screening. We have some recommendations on how we're going to streamline that process moving forward, so it's equitable for all of our students who are coming in to our district for the first time, so. Jamie, would you like to begin?
Sure. Good evening. So, as long as I've been in the district, which is six years, our kindergarten process has been the same, and that process, and that process is the students, the parents would come into the schools and register in March, and the, our kindergarten teachers would go out to our local preschools and visit the kids at the preschool. They would talk to their, the preschool teacher sometime in May and June, and then once the students were in our school in September, we would do a screening, which included some early literacy subtests that the students would engage in, and that assessment was administered by reading teachers. And so this is how the process has been, probably well before those six years, but I can speak to the six. So it seemed like it was a good time to review that process and to stop and take a look at what we have been doing to make sure that we're getting all of the information that we want, and that it is as helpful as it can be, so that we're prepared for the students when they arrive. In addition, we had teachers who had come from other schools who had used a different process, or parents who were wondering about how we assess kids and how we make decisions about class placement and things like that. So it seemed like a natural time to take a step to look at what we've done all along, to see if we wanted to make any changes. And so what we started to look at was the timeline. Does it make sense for us to wait to screen our kids until September? Does it make sense for us to take teachers out of their kindergarten classrooms for days to go visit classrooms of their incoming students? Are we using the right screening tool? Are we able to use the data that we collect in meaningful ways? Are there ways that we could have the data organized and stored in a way that makes it more usable for teachers? And is there a way that we could let parents know what the information is that we're collecting, so that they know when their children are taking these assessments or involved in this kind of work, that they know what it is that we're finding and how we're using that information? So we started to look at all of that, and we did that by first really looking at what other districts in the area were doing, and it seemed that most districts were screening in May or June, and those that had screened in September had, the first week of September was a half day, or they had callback days. Some of you might remember that term, where some of the kids would stay a whole day and some wouldn't, so that the school could screen. But then when the state changed the half-day requirements, they were revisiting also whether it made sense to do those screenings. We decided to look at our screening tool and see what other districts were doing, and it seemed like our tool was close to some, and then some districts used more of a standardized assessment, like the dial, which would be one that's common that you might have heard of. So we looked at that. So we looked at timelines, we looked at screening tools, and then we visited a, we visited Maia Pak School District, who does all of their screening on an iPad using a system, so we went to visit that. So after kind of gathering all of this information and talking to our reading teachers who gave the assessment, and I think I gave probably 100 kindergarten assessments during the fall just so that I could experience it, we decided that it made sense to make some changes. And so some of the changes that we're hoping to make and are considering is to shift our screening from September to early June, and so the kids would come in during the first week in June and participate in a screening at their elementary school. And it would, the screening would have two parts. One part would be the primary literacy assessment that we, that assesses kind of reading readiness skills, and the other part would be, the children would be in a group and engage in play activities, and there's an observational survey for how they interact and to look at some of their social skills. So that kind of replaces a little bit the, seeing them in their preschool class. We are going to try ESGI, which stands for Educational Software for Guiding Instruction, and while ESGI gives us the opportunity to customize, so we could put our, our exact screener in that system, it had very many similar assessments, so it's an easy, very easy transition, and will then, that will then take the data, so that we can look at it and use it to inform instruction once the children are with us in September. We are going to have some administrators visit the preschools instead and meet with the director for those students who might have something that is important for us to know, to prepare for certain children when they come to kindergarten. So we're not anticipating talking about all of our students, but talking about those that might have some unique or individual needs that we need to be aware of and plan for, so that we can provide the best program for those students. And the other thing that we're hoping to try this year is when the, when the parents leave with their child after the screening, ESGI prints out a parent report and handing that to the parent, so the parent would know what it is that we now know that their child can do and demonstrated on that, on those assessments. So why ESGI? I think ESGI is going to be a game changer for us. I think one of the things that it will really help with is teachers will have access to that data very readily, so that they can use it to plan their instruction, so that they can think about the kids in their class, how they could arrange small groups, what letters kids already know, what letters they still need to know. I think it'll save time, and it'll make that data very accessible and available to them. So I actually, when I looked at these next steps, I think when you got them, we were hoping to do this, I think we're pretty close to even having completed our next steps. We are in the process of purchasing the ESGI platform. It's about $200 per teacher, but there's a 60-day free trial, so we have the free trial, and we have uploaded our screener to it, and anybody who is in the, who's close to any of us that has a child who's four or five years has now taken our screener using ESGI. We have like solicited anybody who has a child who's close to entering kindergarten to check it out, so we have done that. I have met with all of the kindergarten teachers who are very excited about the change. One of the things that they noticed is when the kids were doing the screening in September, very often it was a person who wasn't their teacher taking them out of their classroom during the first week or two of school, so it was hard to tell whether we were getting accurate information or not. Now, we may still have that problem in June when we're taking a child away from their mom, but other schools have not reported a problem with that, so we're hoping that that will be easier. And we have, we will share information with parents. This is the first step in communicating to parents the change, and we'll also share with the preschools that we're making this change. So here are our dates coming up. Registration for kindergarten is in all three buildings the week of March 11th. So if anybody knows any kindergartners, incoming kindergartners that might not have reached out to the district, they need to do that. Screenings will take place on the days listed above, and then we will add a date at the end of the summer for those students who register during the summer. We'll have a date specified for children to come in and do the two parts of the screener during the summer.
Adam, do you want to talk a little bit about how this connects to the strategic plan?
Yeah, so one of the areas identified in the strategic planning process, we have five priority areas, and one of the areas is about assessment and how we communicate, how we use and communicate assessment data to not only inform instruction, but also communicate to parents about progress. And we feel like this is a really important first step. In many cases, some of our parents have other students, so they have a relationship with us and with the district, but for other parents, this is the real first formal interaction that they have with us, is this kindergarten screening process, and we just think it's really important and aligned to our strategic planning process, that we openly and readily communicate student performance data, right? So this is just one snapshot of how a student is doing in terms of their entry into kindergarten, and we just feel like that it creates a level of transparency that's important to us. I think it's also important to note that we hope to, when we print that report for parents, that we also will provide a bunch of resources. Jamie and I have already been accumulating some resources to help guide and support parents in the work they can do over the next couple of months before their student transitions in September. So in some cases, we find that well-meaning parents work with their children on things that aren't as helpful, and they skip some things that are really helpful to us in terms of helping kids learn how to read, for example. So simple things, Jamie and I were talking today about things like, the more parents work on rhyming, the more quickly students are able to read, so we try to emphasize rhyming and de-emphasize sight words, as an example, right? Many parents, well-meaning parents, will work on sight words with their parents, thinking that that will give kids an edge as they learn to read, but we have other things that we'd like them to work on. So we have other things like get a library card and, you know, bring your, bring activities where they could bring their kids to playgrounds and engage in a series of activities. So we're hoping to put together a folder with some resources and put not only the results, but also some things that we'd really like parents to engage in with their kids over the next couple of months, to help them be really prepared for kindergarten. So I think it aligns with the strategic planning process in that way.
And I just want to add, there is another layer on top of how we transition our students in who receive services as preschool students, so that this doesn't take the place of that for those families. So are there any questions?
Yeah. Go ahead, Jeffrey.
I just have one, I'm trying to grasp this. And are we, do we have any expect, is this just an assessment of where they are, or do we have any expectations for where they, minimum expectations, expectations for the minimum math they should know?
We have no expectation. This is baseline data. Whatever they come in knowing, we're going to teach them from where they are. So all we want to know is what they know, without an expectation. So we have not had conversations with the schools, we do not have a minimum expectation. We're not saying you need to know so many letters or anything like that.
Do you, do you think that parents may misinterpret the report and the packet of information that you might share with them for resources as something that they need to do to make sure that their child is prepared, instead of as just, you know, helpful?
So I started to draft what's going to go with the report, and it says, I mean, it says there, "We are not suggesting that you engage in any academic programs or activities of any kind, and that the suggestions that we make are very playful. While you're in the car on your way to your family vacation, you could play, name all the vegetables you can think of, or think of all of the words that rhyme with cat, or," and there are lots of different things like that, "or while you're on your vacation, encourage your child to send a postcard to a relative. And remember, young kids tell stories with pictures, so don't be concerned if there are no words." So I do, I hope that people will read the letter and see that there are playful ways to engage kids in wordplay, read to them, I mean, it says, "Visit the playgrounds in the town," so that your child knows lots of familiar faces when they get to school in September. We are in no way suggesting that they do any kind of prep work to prepare for kindergarten.
We had a pretty big debate about whether or not we should share feedback with families based on the screening, and what we felt at the end of the conversation, particularly based on the feedback we received through the strategic planning process, where our families were feeling we're not giving them enough feedback on how our kids are progressing, that if this is our, our students' first experience with us, and we're collecting information to help us make decisions about placement and how we're going to begin to work with them, we want to share that information with our families in a way that's meaningful, immediately, and sort of set the tone for how we're going to work with our families right from the start of kindergarten. So that's where we landed.
So we're going to try it.
So historically, how many kids do we have? This is more for John, or maybe Lisa, in your past job. How many kids do we have enroll between June and September?
Probably 10 to 15 per school.
I think more, too. I think a little more.
Usually start at about 50, send out about 50 packets, kid earn packets, per school in March, or February, and those are the students that are, and then they come back for that.
So 10 to 15 percent?
I think we're about 50 at each school right now.
50?
50 at each school.
Between June and?
No, currently have 50 who we sent out packets, who we will expect to see next week for registration.
Wait, you're talking about something different. You're asking about a period of time, not total, right?
Who signs up in the summer?
Yeah, how many, how many students do we have sign up between June and August? So 10 to 15 percent then?
10 to 15 per school.
Per school, so that's about 10 percent.
All right, so what we need to think about is how are we going to handle screening at the end of the summer for those students who register late?
Exactly.
So how are we going to get teachers in and have a, just as a meaningful process for those families as we are for our families in June? Yep, that's it, right?
And we'll do the exact same process that we do in June, we'll do, and we might even have to do it for some kids, some, there are kids that register the last, right before school, the day that school starts, so we will have a way to do the exact same process for those students.
That we have to have a process, because we're going to have kids.
Yeah.
The second thing is, you said we used to observe our, in preschool, and we're not going to do that.
Right.
You think it's better observing preschool where the kids are, just the children are already in a comfortable environment, instead of pulling them out and going to our school district where they don't know?
So we were not able to visit all of the preschools. We were only able to visit the preschools that were here in Chappaqua.
Okay.
Or that we had a big cluster of kids who went to that school. The other schools we called, and if we were lucky, we spoke to the teacher. So we think this kind of levels the playing field. We're seeing everybody in a similar situation, so that it's equitable. Every child will be seen, there'll be a room set up like a classroom, and they'll listen to a story and have snack and play, so it'll give us kind of this, somewhat of a standardized environment.
It's like a pre-orientation.
Right, to observe all kids. They'll be in groups of five to seven in each of those group sessions, so there'll be kids to play with. Some kids play alone, most of the kids at that age are parallel playing and will be next to each other playing. Those are the kinds of things that we'll want to look at. So I think it'll, it will be different than seeing them in an environment that they've been in for months, but I think it'll be equitable and standardized for everybody.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you take, do you take input from preschool teachers if you have it or can get it?
Yes, and that's why either the principals or I will visit each of the local nursery schools.
Right.
And on the registration form, a parent has an opportunity to give some input to.
Okay.
And so if there's something on that form that we feel like we need more information about, we can always call the school.
Okay.
Who is going to be administering these screenings? You said it had previously been the reading specialist, is it still going to be?
So it's going to be the kindergarten teachers, because I think it's really important that they know what the screening is and understand the data and the information that's being collected. So it'll be kindergarten teachers, reading teachers, our literacy staff developer, and me.
And are they going to, are the students going to actually be taking this screener on a computer or an iPad?
So it's on a computer, but they don't do, it's an interaction between the admin, the teacher and the child.
So that's just a capture?
Right, or it has, on the screen, it'll flash uppercase letters, and they have to name them, and the screener then pushes whether they, a button, whether they get it correct or not. Or there's a part where they have to find pictures that rhyme, and so the pictures are on the screen, and it just collects whether they did it correctly or not.
Is there any, any data concerns or, or just any thoughts about the fact that it is on a screen, and some kids may or may not interact with screens the same way they do on paper?
We haven't thought of that, but we do have it on paper, so I think we, you know, if somebody seemed to be not responding, we could do it on paper. Or what I will share is, even when we do just the paper, there was a child that, the letter identification part starts with A, the first letter happens to be A. So one child, on uppercase letters, did A, B, C, D, E, F, G, just because it started with A, then every letter went through the alphabet, even though that's not the letter that was presented. And then on lowercase letters, he could name all of the letters. So there was clearly a miss on his understanding of the directions. So, I mean, what we want is information about what they know, so if we need to redo it or do it in a different format, it's easy enough to do it. It's not an exercise to do it just to do it. So if we, you know, if it doesn't seem to be a fit, even after, if after the teacher gets to know the child, they could easily re-administer it, and then you just have another data point that more accurately reflects what the child knows and is able to do.
Thank you. So I think it's always great to look at what we're doing, even if we've been doing it a long time, and reassess and improve, so thank you for doing that. And it sounds like now you'll have information, so you can really hit the ground running for these kids when they get to kindergarten. And I guess the only- when they get to kindergarten. And I, I guess the only thought I have left is to try to minimize, think of some other strategies to minimize any kind of anxiety that parents will be feeling, because I'm sure they will. Especially, you know, if you're sharing feedback, even if, you know, everyone has room for improvement, I'm sure that people will find room for improvement. And we just want to make sure that, you know, we don't raise the level of anxiety going into this. I mean, I think it's the right thing to do.
Just for you, I have the data for, because I have the data for June 1st. I'm talking about incoming for the eighteen, nineteen. So on June 1st, at Grafflin, we had ninety students, and we ended up at ninety-five. So we have five. And then Royston Brook, on June 1st, we have sixty-one, and we ended up with sixty-six. So we added five. And then at West Orchard, we have seventy-nine, and we ended up at eighty-two. So it's just three. So it's very huge.
Okay.
Thank you, Jamie.
For all your efforts in leading this for the district. And thank you, Adam.
Tonight, John and I are going to present the proposed budget for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. But I just would like to remind the community that the budget is still in a process with the final adoption taking place in April. And while tonight will be the broad overview of the budget, the components will be presented in the next coming weeks to the community. And we'll be talking a little bit about the overall picture of what the budget will look like. And then go into the specifics of the budget as we move forward in our process. So I just would like to remind everyone, the basis for our budgeting is on our two strategic questions. The first focuses on providing a program that's fiscally responsible. And the second is providing a program that ensures our students think deeply, support their thinking, apply problem-solving skills, and actively participate in their learning as they acquire content knowledge. As you know, through our strategic planning process, our community has identified the skills and attributes that we find most critical for our, our, our students as they go through our K through twelve educational program. And our thinking behind our social, emotional, and curricular program focus on cultivating these skills and attributes as students transgression-- trans-- go through our, our academic program. So I just want to continue to talk about this as we talk about our budgeting because it really serves as the foundation for our process. Also, in thinking about our budget, we continue to discuss our strategic priorities. The first focuses on using our new instructional spaces to amplify our learning. The, the next three were target areas identified through our strategic planning process that focused on assessment, K through twelve social, emotional learning alignment, and K through twelve curricular alignment. And then our last is using instructional technology to personalize learning. In terms of building our budget, there are four pillars that we take into consideration. The first is class size. The second is our academic and extracurricular program. The third is infrastructure. And the fourth is our contractual obligations. And then our operating standards for two thousand nineteen, twenty, focus on continuing the tradition of excellence in teaching and learning, providing school environments that are safe and supportive, continuing, continuing instructional improvement, the innovative use of time, space, and technology, maximizing efficiencies in scheduling our personnel, high-quality teacher and administrator evaluation systems, optimizing our communication structures with our community, and maintaining our contractual size ratio, ratios, having a rich professional learning curriculum that's ongoing for our staff, maintaining a teaming approach at the middle level, maintaining a breadth and depth of course offerings and extracurricular programs for all of our students, providing cross-disciplinary experiences for our students, ensuring that our facilities continue to be safe, clean, and well-maintained, and that our school and district offices function effectively and efficiently. John, do you want to do the next slide?
Yes. So some of these items that we have gone over in January, on January 9th, but since this is our overview and we presented the budget, so we're going to go over everything with you. And so for the projection, for the enrollment, and later on, several slides later, you will see all the details. But here, just want to give you a summary, that we're going to see an increase in the elementary school, and we're going to project a fifty-eight students increase. And the middle school, we're going to see a decrease of twenty-six students. And at the high school, we will see a decrease of five students. So overall, we're projecting an increase of twenty-seven students, increase from this year to next year. And contract obligation for all units, and as you've recalled, at the end of last June, we successfully negotiated contracts with the teachers' union, with the support staff, and the custodial staff. So we have all the contracts in, in place for next year. And so that, that helps with planning for the budget. And then also, the employee retirement system, we know the decrease, it's just going to be a decrease from fifteen percent to fourteen point seven percent. And then the debt service is all in place. We, for the forty-two point five million dollar bond, we did the last borrowing in June of last year. So we're not going to take on any more new debts, and everything is in place. However, that, that the twenty-six point five million dollar borrowing will have an impact on the nineteen, twenty budget because we borrowed it so late, it's not in the current year budget, it's not in the eighteen, nineteen year budget. So you will see an increase in the debt service, and we'll show you that later. And assessed growth factor that is known to us already. And the number is, wait, the growth factor is zero point three eight percent, which is a decrease from last year. And that will come into the calculation in the tax cap. And the health insurance premium, for, for next year, it's going to be three percent, which is a decrease from three point seven five percent. I think if you know the industry average, the three percent increase in premiums is very reasonable. And then equalization rates are known to us now. And for Newcastle, there's an increase from nineteen point zero five to nineteen point one. And then for Mount Pleasant, there's a decrease from one point four three percent to one point four two percent. So this will come into play when we do the tax rate calculation. Unfortunately, they are going the different direction, but, but, but the mound is so small, I already tested out, although there will be a major impact on the tax rates compared to the two, two towns. And teacher retirement system, the TRS number is new, which is, we have good news, because that's going to drop from ten point six three percent to eight point eight six percent. So later on, when we, when we present the health benefit part, you will see that there's a, there's a decrease. That really helped with the total overall budget. And then the state A calculations, that also is a new number since our last presentation. You will see an increase in the transportation aid, and also you will see an increase of the building aid. The building aid is reasonable because we have debt service, we have construction going on. So, so some of the A's will be flowing now. It's not in the full amount of forty-two point five million dollar bond, but some of them will start flowing because as soon as we finish a project, we file a report, and then, and then they will start flowing. And CPI for the tax cap calculation, the CPI for the calendar year two thousand eighteen is two point four four. And you know, the tax cap law is that two percent or CPI, whichever is lower. So it is going to be two percent. We will show you the tax cap calculation later, so you will see the number we will be using is two percent. And the tax cap number you will see later. We, we know that now. So, so unknown pieces that will impact budgets right now is transportation cost, which we will not know until the middle of June because it's going to use the CPI number from June of two thousand eighteen to May two thousand nineteen. So we don't know it, but we did the calculation. We did an estimation. And I'm using the two point five percent. So I think it's probably safe. Special education placements, we're in the process of reviewing, CSC reviews right now. So we will note the numbers later. And then the SaaS tax valuation, when we do the presentation, March twenty-seventh, we're going to use the estimated numbers because we're not going to know the true number until probably the middle of July.
Go ahead, John.
Okay. So, so this is the budget. And the total increase is going to be, our proposed budget is going to be a hundred twenty-six million, thirty-nine thousand and a hundred eighty-eight dollars.
Can I run the menu, some different sort of contrast next to it?
Yes, I was going to say that.
That represented two point eight four percent.
The colors are way too dark this year.
Yes, that, that represented two point eight four percent increase from budget to budget. And the reason the budget to budget increase is so large compared to the prior years is because we are taking on the additional debt. We borrowed a twenty-six point five million dollar, the bond. So if you look at this, the bottom part, the, the graph, you know, we have some very good years. And then the last two years, the current year and then projected next year, you see a higher spike. I just want to give you the reason. For this current year, the eighteen, nineteen budget, we had additional debt service of one million dollars. I'm talking about the second bar from the right. So that's eighteen, nineteen. And we borrowed sixteen million dollars. And that increased the budget by over a million dollars. So if we exclude that one million dollar debt service, the budget increase would have been one point six four percent. So it would be more in line with the rest of the years that is shown. And then for, for next year, the nineteen eighteen, nineteen, twenty budget year, we took on twenty-six point five million dollar bond. And the total cost is one point nine million dollars. So if you exclude the one point nine million dollars from the total increase of three point four million increase right here, and the, the, the budget to budget increase would have been one point two nine percent. So the last two years, the current year and next year, the last two bars you see here, they are totally, the, the reason they are so high is because they are totally impacted by the, the debt service we had to take on. But those debt service would not have an impact on the tax levy. We will unpack that later. So this is the budget to budget increase for the last eight, eight budget, eight budget, or seven increases. And this is very small. So if you go to the next slide, you will see the increases for the budget to budget increase for eight budgets and seven in, actually, eight budget, and the average is one point seven six percent, which is, we think is very reasonable. And the tax levy increase is one point two six percent. And then as far as the tax rates, right now, we don't know because we don't have the tax rates yet. So this is the slide, it's very interesting. We always like to show because it's the performance versus expenditures. And I'm absolutely sure you cannot see them, but these are all the school districts in Rockland, Putnam, as well as Westchester Counties, the three counties. And you see a lot of blank spots. So some of the school districts did not report out. So we don't have all the information, but just based on the informations that we have, we are ranked, we can go to the next slide. So we are ranked twelve out of the forty-five. And, you know, most of the school district, you see here, they're all our neighboring districts. And I think you can also, you know, think about, you know, when, when, when you rank the performance and versus the cost per pupil. And also, one, one thing I just want to mention with the, this ranking is the higher it is, that means the more per pupil cost, that the higher the per pupil cost.
Throw Potomac Hills out, right?
Yes. You know, there's a story behind every school. There is a reason for, for the amount. You know, Potomac Hills is a very small school district, but, and therefore they do not have, can, cannot enjoy the economy of scales. And then also, they do not have a high school. So they have to send all the high school kids out to the neighboring three school districts for, for education. So now we go to the details, expenditures.
John, there's something I would like to say about that, that graph. It's a very just interesting measure because when you show us at our ranking, I mean, it's good that we're showing a lot of value for our money. But on the other, you know, you don't want to be on top. But on the other hand, you don't want to be much below because it just shows, it's not necessarily better to be at the very lowest because that just shows that you're perhaps not a fund, not funding your programs adequately. So it's not, it's not like a black and white situation with that graph.
And also, another thing, Vicky, I totally agree with you. And also, another thing is that if you look at this particular graph, table, if I, you know, I don't have children. And, you know, if I had, I would, I would say, if compared to this, our neighboring district here that are listed, I think I would, I would, I would say that, you know, we're getting the value out of the taxes that we are paying. That's the way I'll look at this, this particular graph compared to other school districts.
Are there any studies that show a correlation between spending and academic excellence?
Well, I think this graph will show.
Well, the, the performance, I, I have a question though. What, what performance is it showing? It's confusing.
There's no performance. I think it's, it's in your head.
Okay.
No, no, I would say this. I would say, I would say this. I think most of the parents I've, I've met, I've been here twelve years, I think, I only know two families really have been here for generations. Most, most families really come here for education.
Right.
And I think they, they probably think they're getting the value. Otherwise, I don't think they would be coming here.
So when you're saying performance versus expenditure, you're saying like, we're expending twelve out of forty-five. The performance is what we know to be our performance, you're saying? That it's not really charting anything?
I would say in performance, we're probably way up there.
Okay.
Somewhere. I'm not going to tell you where.
If you, depending on what measure you use.
Right.
Right? So if you look at our K through eight, I'm sorry, if you look through our three through eight assessment results on, on the Common Core assessments, you'll see that we're, all of our grade levels are typically in the top three.
Right, okay.
Across, across these districts.
Okay.
So I think what John--
This is not saying anything about performance.
Right. So I just didn't know if we should call it performance versus expenditure because it's not really saying anything about performance.
No, we're not. It's a ranking.
It's ranking per pupil.
No, the, the--
But I think--
I think the point, the point that John is, is making is, if you look at the cost per pupil on this chart, but you also take into consideration how well our students do on our assessments.
Oh, I a hundred percent agree.
It's a good value for the dollar.
Performance, we might want to just rename that. That's all I'm saying, like--
Okay, we can think about it, but--
But, but I know exactly what you're saying. I do.
Because when, when I think, when I talk to some people, they are talking about the value.
Yes, I think the value for a dollar, right.
I think our value is much higher than twelve in terms of--
Yes, yes, exactly.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So the expenditures, we, we're using the same categories. We have always been using the same, same categories. And the story here is really, this large number is the debt service. And you can tell we have an increase of one point eight million. That's about the amount that, the twenty-six point five million dollars that we borrowed in June. And because it was so late, and we, and therefore, we didn't work it into the budget. So we have to start putting it in the budget starting the nineteen, twenty budget year. But also, the board will recall that a couple more meetings prior, we actually asked you to approve a budget transfer to pay for the amount that was not budgeted in the eighteen, nineteen budget. So we are paying it. It's just that it's not in the budget. But this is, the nineteen, twenty budget is the first year is being reflected. Okay. And then here, it just tells you the percentage. Okay, and then here, it just tells you the percentage. And the interesting thing is that the way I'm seeing it is that these two numbers, the salaries and employee benefits usually add up, I think, you know, 12 years ago was about 75 percent. Now, it's a little bit less now. If you add up these two number, for next year, we're talking about 73 percent or so. So, slightly lower than before, whereas the debt service is much higher.
I'm sorry, go ahead, John, I want to ask a question.
You want to go back? Go ahead, Warren.
Under expenditures, you have salaries at an increase of 3.6 percent. That's raw salary, right?
Yes.
Is there any, is there any data that shows the amount of employees versus that's divided by that salary? Because salaries could go up if we hire more employees and it's sort of a, it could be a misview of that information.
You mean this, maybe, can you?
You know, if you say our salaries are going up from 63 million to 65 million, roughly, $2 million, is that just due to contractual or is that due to increase in staff?
Okay, you will see, we are increasing staff too. So, later, we are going to add additional staff, which Christine will talk about, so.
If you took the increase in staff out, I mean, you just, you can't because it's a, it's a number. What would the increase be? Do we know?
I mean, we can get that number for you at one of our next budget presentations. I mean, I, you'll see that the staff that we're adding, we already have here working. We just need to add them to the budget primarily. I mean, we have one other position that's really new.
There's also a change in the mix. We hire new teachers and other teachers retire. So, that, well, we may have the same number of staff, the salary may go up or down.
Right, but I'm saying if we have more staff, then you'd think that the salary would increase. It's not just because salaries are increasing.
No, right. It's an aggregate number.
It's an aggregate number, exactly. So, it'd be interesting to see if you had a static amount of staff, what the actual budget increase would be.
So, you'd like to see a number sort of like the per pupil expenditure number, but for staff and the increase in salary.
Well, per pupil is that we can use that number divided by the enrollment.
But you could do the same thing here. You could say salaries are 63 million divided by 100, or is it 65 divided by 101?
You know, in reality, of all the numbers there, the salary is the most difficult to nail down, to judge. There are many, many reasons. You have retirements, you have people on leave, you have people stay out for a year or two, and you have increasing additional staff and you have reduction in staff. There's just a very, very mixed bag.
But, you know, John, if you think about it, per pupil is also a mixed bag because you have some students who, who require many more services than others, that are more expensive. There are students who take AP, students who don't. So, there are many different levels.
But that is an easier number to explain because you basically just took the total budget by, divide by the total enrollment.
Right. We could take total salary divided by total staff.
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, just, that's a-
Okay.
I mean, it's a rough number, it doesn't show anything other than what Warren is talking about.
It's just a different way to look at it.
We can show you next time.
Okay, thank you.
And so, this is the revenue. And the big story here is that we have a large increase in the state aid and it's mainly because of two things. One is the transportation aid and also because of the building aid. The transportation aid is a surprise to us. I think it actually is going up by 300, $400,000. It's actually because of the assessment value. Our assessment value dipped in 2016 and therefore, the transportation aid goes up. It's bizarre, but-
This whole method of funding these expense-based aids is being challenged now. I was going to talk about this at the next meeting, but, you know, the governor's proposed changing.
He's talking about, he's talking about service aid is going to be all lumped together.
Right, there are 11 categories. Then we want to consolidate them and cap them and make it a function of, a wealth-based function or an enrollment-based function.
It's going to be based on, I think, the CPI.
The CPI plus enrollment, I think. But it's going to be a moving number.
But I'm watching that because if that passes, right now, there are a lot of oppositions. But if that passes, I think as a district, we need to strategize how to address that.
Yeah, everyone will have to.
Yeah.
It may not pass because I, you're right, there's a lot of opposition.
Yes, right. But, but you know, you need to strategize how to deal with that piece. You know, then, then you really have to load it up for this year because this year expenditure is going to be, next year's aid and next year, aid is going to be frozen. So, that is the answer. So, this is the representation of each category in the total revenue amount. So, you see that the property taxes drop slightly. The reason is because the state aid has gone up. And then also, this is the important part, is that we are using, and, and we're going to go into the detail. It is appropriation of fund balance. We are increasing from 2.5 to 3.9. And when we actually go over the revenues on March 27th, you will see, we'll have one line that is say, will say that transfer of funds, fund balance, there's an amount of money. And then also, I think we also say that, now, I think, we actually will also say that sale of properties because all depends when we sell the property and, you know, as long as we can sell that piece of property by June 2020, we can actually use the sale amount to fund this piece. And that's the part that's going to bring the, the tax levy down to the level that, that the bond has no impact on the tax levy. Okay, so this is the calculation of tax cap. You're not going to see, see the, all the, the small numbers here, but our entire presentation is on the website, so you can check it out. And you will see the 2% CPI that we used. And also, you will see the increase down here of the debt service. And so, our total number, actually, I can't even see it. I'll tell you in a minute. The, the, I know the percentage is actually the tax, tax cap is at 3.19 percent. And you know, the budget we introduced is at 0.84. So, we are way below the, the tax cap. And I think, Warren, we always watch, watches, we always watch the, the numbers that other districts report out. And we know that about 50 to 60 percent of the school districts, they go directly to the top of the tax cap. And you know, that's not our tradition. We always go with what we need and that's the amount that we ask the taxpayers to pay. So, so the tax cap limit is 3.19 percent, you know, based on the number here. And our, our tax levy increase is 0.84 percent. And this report has been submitted to the comptroller's office already. And so, this is the $42.5 million bond and, you know, this is basically what we promised our taxpayers and the funding of this will have no impact on the tax levies. And these are the five points that we talked about, how are we going to achieve that? The first one is done already. Through the 1819 budget, we reduce the interfund transfer by $475,000. And that is permanent, so every year, there's a reduction, the same amount of reduction, not additional, additional.
John, can you go back to tax levy a second?
Yeah.
Yeah, I have a question too.
Tax levy?
Right there.
Right here?
Okay.
Were the percentages you're talking about?
Yeah, the three point.
No, no, what you do is, it's not there, it's this number divided by this number.
Yeah, but can you say the percentage again?
3.19. That's the tax cap.
Yeah.
So-
This is the lowest we've ever gone.
It's very low. So, when you see, when we report out to the School Board Association, they will start collecting the, the data probably next week, probably, right, Vicky? And that's the number we're going, you're going to see, is, is going to be 0.84 percent. And our cap is 3.19.
And how do you calculate that again?
Using this number.
Which one?
Three.
3 million.
3.4.
3.4 million?
Right.
Divided by 109 million on the top, very top.
The 109, 416?
The first number.
Okay.
What would be the dollar, the dollar increase is right here.
Oh, the prior year tax levy, the 109.
The dollar increase is-
3.4.
3480, right?
So, you see, you see the last number, the very bottom number divided by the very top number.
Okay.
And you get 3.19 percent.
We are leaving a lot of money on the table.
Which is the right thing because we only need, you know, the interesting thing is that, truthfully, I really don't ever even look at this sheet because really, it's just whatever we need is what we get, try to get. And then, because it's required, then we calculate this, which is the right way to do it. But if you look at last year's data, you know, the last report was probably May with all the other school districts. If you calculate it, you'll have, you will see 50 to 60 percent of the school districts will go to the top.
No, I understand. I guess there are different ways of looking at it, you know, and I, I go back and forth. I mean, on the one hand, it's a good thing to ask for as little as possible, okay? That's good. We, we don't want to pay higher taxes. On the other hand, we want to offer the best possible programming that we can and be as innovative as we can.
Later on, you will see-
And there's a balance. There's a balance to that.
Later on, you will see that, you know, we have some, some changes.
Yeah.
And you will see the highlights. And then also, through everyone's presentation with Adam, Heidi, Josh, and you will see, we'll be offering a very rich program.
I understand, I understand. The program is, our program is very rich, there's no doubt. But it really all depends on what our goals are and what we want. And I guess that's something that we need to decide.
Well-
And this could be the best, the best budget.
But I think-
And we could decide that this is the best thing to do. I'm not, I'm not really saying it isn't.
But, but I think the answer is, answer is really the second slide, the second slide that Christine talked about is really the two strategic questions, right?
There, there's more to it. I mean, those questions are abstract. The budget is something really concrete. And we talk about innovative work. And I, I just think it's something to think about. I don't really have any answers right now, but I just want to raise the, the issue.
I think the way that we go about building the budget is very healthy in that we discuss with our team what we need to provide the best possible program for our students and then we build the budget around that. So, in this process, everything that we believe that we need will be presented to you throughout the budgeting process. We didn't sit down and say, well, we really need to be cognizant of the levy limit when we were designing the program for next year. And we were able to support a budget and present to you what we need within the constructs of what we felt would be appropriate for this community. And we happen to be under the levy limit significantly, but I think that John's right. That's where we should be.
Can you, and, and it's our role as a board to, to take a look at what you're recommending and decide what it is that the community would like to have.
Correct.
And that, that's a balance of many, many, many interests. So, in doing that, I just want to have an understa, a better understanding of what you mean when you say what we need.
Right. And I think you'll find when we go through the process, we'll be talking to you about maintaining a lot of our current program, but also expanding certain areas based on what we've identified through our strategic planning process and our conversations with our building level administrators.
Okay.
About how to enhance what we currently are offering our kids. So, you'll see a little bit of that tonight in the next slides, but then we'll go into more detail.
I want to flesh that out.
Right.
And I, I do want to talk about what it is that, that we can do to make sure that we offer the best possible programmatic offerings that we have to, to our kids and to do the best innovative work that we can, which is something that we've, we've always done and that's what keeps, keeps us growing and what keeps people coming here. And I want to make sure that we, we stay on top of that.
We also, John and I often talk about how a large majority of this community, they don't have students in this district and-
I am aware. That's why I'm saying that there are many, many different interests that we have to balance. And it's always a question of balance.
Right.
Right? So, when I look at this, this is the biggest discrepancy I've seen between our allowable tax cap and what we are actually asking for. It's a big difference and I'm just wondering if that has tipped the scales.
Let me just add another point is that this year, the tax cap number is higher. Last year was high too. The last year, the number was high was because the assessed value was high. It was over 1 percent. But this year, the number is going, has gone up is because you will see in, in here, the component part, you will see there's an increase in the, the debt service can be added into a building aid. And therefore, it actually make this number higher.
Which, which number are you pointing to?
It's here. Compared, you know, these two sets are identical. If you do a comparison, you will see there's an increase up here.
So, our exclusions are higher, you're saying?
Right.
Yes.
The other thing is, we could always adjust if you want, if you want to spend more, we could use less, use less reserves.
Yeah.
But, but you know, but, but I think the important thing is, you know, we need to have credibility, you know, the board and administration. And when we went out for the bond, that's what we said.
Correct. But we don't, we've, we've used reserves years, for years without having bond. So, I mean, some of the reserves have been used, like the 2.55 last year.
That part can be reduced.
That could be reduced.
That's correct.
I mean, I guess the question really is to ask Christine, is, is there anything not in this budget that you would need?
Perhaps. And we'll have a discussion on Monday with Josh about some thoughts we have around technology in seventh and eighth grade. But we felt like we needed to have a discussion about that at the board level prior to placing it in the budget.
And there are things that could change, whether it's class size and things like that that have come up previously.
Right.
So, we have a lot of room if we need something, but we also have to be mindful, especially with the new tax structure and what people can deduct and being mindful of everybody's taxes and stuff that this is, this is part of our being fiscally responsible, that we're getting what we want and also being responsible.
And you also know through our process last year, this whole month is about getting feedback before presenting the final budget to you for approval. So, you know, we have our forms with our parents. We'll have opportunities for you to hear from different administrators. And then we shape our final budget based on all of that feedback as well. So, this is the initial look at what we feel like.
Right, but what I'm hearing, you said, you, this is what you want. This is the budget you want. I mean, this is the program you want.
Yes. However, there may be one additional item that you, we might talk with you about on Monday about possibly adding to this particular budget, which we did not do because we felt a discussion was warranted prior to us doing that. And it has to do with our seventh and eighth grade graders and personalized learning devices.
Devices.
Because initially, we had thought that we would use the bring your own device approach that we have it really, but we're finding that that might be problematic for the type of movement that we'd like to see in this district around using technology at the middle level. So, we want to talk about that because we haven't talked about that with you prior to placing that in the budget and assuming that that would be something that would be acceptable.
Jeff, you have a question?
Oh, no, not at this moment. I'm trying to grasp everything I heard.
All right, so we have two propositions on the agenda for voter consideration and we've talked about these throughout the past year. So, the first will be the Bell cafeteria renovation and that would be supported by the school lunch fund. And the second will be the person traps at the five lower level schools, as well as the handicap accessibility at Bell. And that would be supported by fund balance. So, these will also, we're asking you to approve these also being placed on the ballot for voter, voter consideration in May.
And also, the important thing is that these two propositions, if they are approved, they will have no impact on the tax levy. And also, the important thing is that these two propositions, if they are approved, they will have no impact on the tax levy. Uh, I'd just add one more thing is the Bell cafeteria renovation. The total cost right now, we're using a budget of three hundred and ninety thousand dollars. And so we are asking the voters, well, we're asking the board to approve this first, to put this on the, on the ballot, to move a hundred and ninety thousand dollars from the lunch fund into the capital fund. So that's a hundred and ninety thousand. And so we need another two hundred thousand dollars. In this year's budget, eighteen nineteen budget, if you look at the interfund transfer, we already have a hundred thousand dollars set aside, approved by the voters last year. So that comes to two hundred and ninety thousand. And in the nineteen twenty budget, we have another line for a hundred thousand. So that's another interfund transfer. So with a hundred and ninety thousand in this proposition, and then the two hundred thousand from the interfund transfer combined, we have enough money to renovate the Bell cafeteria.
And that, those resolutions are on our agenda?
Today.
Right.
Tonight.
That's the hundred and ninety thousand?
Yes.
Okay.
And the person traps, these are, uh, this is, uh, this is going to affect the budget or it's not going to? I'm, I'm confused.
It would affect the budget, but not levy, because we are going to use the support here, supported by fund balance, and will have no impact on the tax levy.
So, um, just as a reminder for the community.
So why, why do we need, why do we need voter approval for that?
Because it's a capital project. It has to be approved by the, by the public.
We've done that before.
We've moved funds before.
We've done that.
We did a Greeley, we did a, number one. We, we moved six hundred thousand, um, from the lunch fund into the capital fund to renovate Greeley Cafeteria.
And it was on the ballot. We just have to be really clear that there's no impact on the tax levy. It has to be prominent on the.
And we have been, we've been discussing this since last June.
Right.
And so we've gone through a lot of steps here to be prepared to do this work this summer. But this would be the last step in the process to be able to expand the funding.
What's, what's the number they have to go to the public for? Two hundred thousand, John?
No, any, any capital project, you need to go to the.
Voters.
Voters, um, either through proposition or you through budget. For example, that a hundred thousand is in the budget. The voters are approving it, but they're approving just one budget line.
Okay.
All right, so these are our enrollment projection slides. So this is the overall enrollment for the district from two thousand thirteen all the way through the projected enrollment into twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, um, which includes our students who are placed out of district. And then, um, this is our class size projections at our elementary schools. And you'll see that, um, our enrollment's pretty consistent across the grade levels. And I just would like to remind our families that kindergarten enrollment is different than first grade enrollment, which is different, um, from second through fourth grade enrollment in terms of our class size maximums. And then these are our enrollment figures for both Bell and Seven Bridges, where we employ a teaming model in both of those buildings. And then finally, this is our overall enrollment and class size projections at Horace Greeley High School moving forward. Um, so in terms of what we're proposing, and we'll go into more detail around the why associated with these particular additions as we do our component presentations in the next few weeks. First, based on our enrollment projections, we are anticipating reducing two core teachers at the middle level. At the high school in this budget, we're proposing adding a director of science research. And when we talk about this position next week, you're going to hear about, um, being able to accommodate the students who want to participate in that program. So increasing, increasing the number of courses that we offer in the first year, so we don't have to, um, so we don't have to restrict enrollment for kids who'd like to be a part of this program. Because right now, our, our kids who want to be involved exceed our capacity for the number of sections we're able to offer. And then you'll hear a lot about what other districts, how they support their, uh, science research, search program by having a director. So we're going to talk about that. We'll be talking about how we're going to support our new steam building and leveraging some faculty leadership. And then, um, as you know, right now, we have a roaming security guard at Greeley, but that was not placed in the budget last year. So we'd like to add that position to the budget. In terms of our district, we have two E and L teachers that we've had to add because of enrollment. So you'll hear about our E and L enrollment next week. These positions are already here. We have teachers, um, working in those two F T Es right now, but we need to add those positions to the budget. Um, we talked about how we were adding a secretary to help support the athletic director's office, particularly now that we have, uh, we reshaped how we support our communities who'd like to use our fields. So we need to add that position to the budget. Um, and then you'll hear Joe talk a little bit about how we need to support our new buildings and spaces coming online at both Greeley and Seven Bridges. And then finally, we have a point five security supervisor right now, who we added to our, um, to our, uh, budget. But that person's already in place. So we actually have to have a placeholder for them now in next year's budget. And then, um, we're reducing, um, an F T and the business office. And we talked about that when we were hiring the athletics secretary for Jason. But again, we'll go into more detail around the why associated with, with all these once we get into the component presentations. All right, so in summary, we feel like we're presenting a budget to you that responds to the strategic questions, that also addresses, um, the areas that are targeted in the coherence plan, as well as our new spaces that we need to be thinking about, how to support teachers and students in those spaces, as well as how to leverage personalized learning in our classrooms that meet our operating standards from this year, moving forward into next year. We are thinking about safety and presenting a budget to you that ensures our kids are physically and emotionally, um, safe in our school district, increasing areas of opportunities for our Greeley students, particularly in science research, using faculty leadership to support some of our new initiatives, providing additional clerical staff to support our athletic department and community use of our facilities, as well as, um, communication around our athletic program. We're addressing our E and L population needs by increasing our staff to deliver required services. Uh, we're adjusting our personnel based on enrollment. We're main- maintaining a budget below our tax levy limit to ensure community members are eligible for the property tax rebate. And, um, we're redesigning our outdated facilities without impacting our levy. So again, it's just a recap of our proposed budget for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, as well as the two propositions for voter consideration that we're asking you to consider approving for our May vote. And so in terms of our budget calendar, um, tonight is our superintendent budget recommendation. And then you'll see that our next phase here is our component presentations, all of which will be posted online for our families who aren't able to, uh, attend the, uh, the budget, um, the budget meetings in the next coming weeks. We have our PTA sponsored community forums after our component presentations are completed, and that will, those will take place on March twenty-eighth. Um, one will be in the morning and one will be in the evening, which has been, um, in line with our tradition in terms of how we, uh, work with the PTA to present our budget to our community. And then again, we welcome comments about our budget during this process. Um, and we provided our contact information for our parents and our community members so they can reach out to us if they'd like to give us feedback outside of our traditional meeting setting. So that concludes our proposed budget presentation. So are there any additional questions?
Do you have any figures on what the E and L, um, population is and what the increase has been?
We do. We're going to be sharing that with you next week.
Okay.
During Adam's presentation.
Okay.
On the curriculum.
Also, I just have to get this in, in here, even though it's not budget related. But I really think we need to, um, to revise our teaching and learning, um, strategic question to be more in line with the coherence plan and profile of a Greeley graduate and attributes. And I don't know when, when we would do that.
Right.
But I, um, I know I've mentioned this several times before. I, I just think the strategic question's a little bit behind where we would like to, where we are, actually. You know, it's not a budget issue, but you know, we use this question many times, especially to frame the budget. And, um, I don't know how everyone feels about that.
I know, how do you?
I, I feel like I keep, I don't know if people just disagree with that.
Well, I think this might be the first time since I've joined the board that the question has come out, actually.
Oh, I, I've been saying this for, for like maybe five years. I've been saying this for more than five, five years.
Okay, I'm not, I don't understand the process, but that's not a good idea.
So, so we have, you know, the broad strategic question that guides the work of the district. We have two of them. One is financials. And it's, uh, the teaching and learning question is how can the district ensure that all students think deeply, support their thinking, apply problem solving skills and actively participate in their learning as they acquire content knowledge? And I remember when this question was being formulated back in two thousand four, I believe. Jeffy, were you on the board when this question was being?
No.
I, I remember the wordsmithing of the question.
It was actually reformulated.
It was reformulated.
Dr. McKay helped us rewrite it.
It, it was just a couple of words and a comma that were added. But, but this is, this question, you want, you want your, it's basically a district goal, and we express our goal in terms of a question. So you want your, your goal or your strategic question to be, um, very forward looking and to be kind of ahead of where you are, something you aspire to. And I think we've, we've passed it.
It, it seems to me that that's something we should probably reaffirm on or adjust on a regular basis.
Well, usually it's, um.
Whether it's every five years or something like that.
Usually, I guess, a, a district goal is something that can carry you for, you know, a number of years. But, but I think we've passed, we've passed the ten year.
You should just say five years.
Yeah, but maybe more than that. I don't know, but we certainly passed the ten year mark.
But I think you would want to just make sure that you, you know, I think you would want to make a conscious decision to say, yes, this is still what we want. But I don't know what the process is.
Pretty much over the last six years I've been aboard, we've always looked at it and said, this is still pertinent, what we're doing.
Well, I just, I, I remember that, but we, I disagree with that.
I think my first year, we switched like a word or a comma or something like that.
Can I just offer, um, in connection with, there's no social emotional learning as a, as a, as a part of these questions?
Exactly, right.
And that's a, um, a high priority area for the district in the strategic plan. So I think that we would have to revisit these questions probably in the future to memorialize that in some way, since these, these two questions really guide the whole process.
Yes, is that something we could, for the summer or something?
Sure.
Can we commit to doing that? Does everyone, first of all?
I think that would be an excellent thing to talk about, like during the retreat or, or working session or something.
So can we commit? Would you like to commit to doing that?
Sure.
Yes.
I think we should commit.
Yeah.
Especially as Christine said, with the social emotional learning that we're, we've been concentrating on, especially this year. That could be added as a, as a goal to take us forward.
Yeah, no, I, I agree. There's a, can I actually make a different comment or do we?
You can make as many comments as you want.
Well, no, I just, before I change the subject, I want to make sure we were good with that one.
Yeah.
So, I wanted to actually go back to the portrait of the Greeley graduate. And I wanted to ask the question, and I apologize that I didn't ask it at the strategic coherence meeting last week. But we say the portrait of a Greeley graduate, but we talk about K through twelve. And I'm wondering if we may want to use a different word, whether it's Chappaqua or something, to say that we're not just talking about the high school. This is a, this is every schoo- this is in every school that's thinking about this. Even though they just, the school they will happen to graduate will be Greeley, but this is what the product of our entire, um, district is.
I think it, I think it almost infers that, right? Because
That they go all the way through.
If you go all the way through, this is what you're learning from K through twelve, and this is what a Greeley graduate should aspire to or have the skills to graduate.
I know, but I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that phrasing it that way, um, with Greeley graduate kind of gives the the same acknowledgement to all of the work that's being done in every building. I think we tend to talk a lot about the high school, and I think that it would help us in our conversations if we were talking about the Chappaqua graduate rather than just the Greeley graduate.
What's a Chappaqua graduate, though?
It's a product of the entire process.
But you, you don't graduate from Chappaqua, you graduate from Greeley.
But you're a product of a lot of schools and a lot of.
You're a product of the Chappaqua Central School District. Right, so you're instead of saying Greeley graduate, central school, central, Chappaqua Central School District, skills and attributes?
I just wanted to.
I don't have an ex- I don't have a specific proposal here. It's just something I wanted.
It's something you're thinking about, right? So I just want to think about process. So this concept of Greeley graduate came out of a strategic planning team made up of all representatives, right? It was made up of community members, faculty members, students, um, administrators, board members. So I think the concept of the Gree- Greeley graduate and defining that graduate through these six attributes was a, was a collective effort. So I think the discussion of how that is framed is one for the strategic coherence planning team.
And, and I'm thinking about it as a, as a marketing, um, from, from a marketing standpoint. But I, like I said, I, I know that I, I, I realized that I didn't have the thought together in the meeting last week. But I would like it to be a discussion.
And I think that, um, it's an important discussion to have, and I would just like to share, these are still drafts. We haven't even decided what our visual representation of this is going to look like.
Okay.
Um, we're still collecting information. We're still doing our learning walks around the six skills and attributes and defining what that looks like K through twelve, because it looks different in kindergarten than it looks in twelfth grade. So we're still in the process of trying to figure out what that visual representation looks like. So for our community members who were here at our last strategic planning meeting, people gave feedback on different models of, um, potential, um, ways that we can represent that, to put throughout our district. So this is still a work in progress. So I think that your comments are important ones, and I'm feeling like those comments, um, need to be shared with the strategic plan, coherence planning team first, and then vetted out there.
Yes.
And then brought back here when we get ready to figure out where we're going to land with what we're going to put in our classrooms.
Okay, great. I wasn't sure if this in the presentation
No, this is not it.
Was, uh, saying that it was final there, so.
No, but we're, I'm just trying to, instead of just bulleting it out, I just want people to see what we're thinking about. I mean, Jane and Warren, what do you think? You're on the strategic planning committee about that process?
We can go, we can go back there and talk to them.
Yeah, but I, 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 I agree with Christine. I understand what you're saying, like, because we want, look, there are some kids that are going to go through elementary or middle school and never get to Greeley, and they're going to get the same sort of thing coming up. But the, the goal is, is what we're, what we're producing and what we're sending off. And so I think, you know, people were comfortable with, you know, calling it the portrait of a Greeley graduate, because that is our high school, and that's where you would finish your K to twelve education. So I do think it, it, we got there through a very collaborative process.
These are all the skills that would build up.
That would build up to it. Maybe there's a different way of, of, of saying that. I, I'm okay with it, but I understand Holly's point, so.
And I would say that Holly's point has never been discussed. I just would also like to mention that you're hearing our new intercom system.
Yes, okay.
That they're putting in place for Greeley, real time. So, um, but I, but I think the conversation's important. So let me just figure out when would be a good time for us to reconvene with the group, because we never talked about that. It was always a Greeley grad.
I mean, just for me, as a long time resident, um, Greeley is sort of synonymous with Chappaqua in that, I, I mean, when I read it, I don't picture it as just a Greeley high school. I picture it as the district. And I, you know, for, and so what school district do you live in? A lot of people say, you know, they'll say. And I, you know, for, and so what school district do you live in? A lot of people say, you know, they'll say Greeley, or they'll say Scarsdale High School, whatever. Not necessar, I just, I see them as synonymous. I, I think she's making a great point in terms of the marketing of it. Now you do have, it's, we're a product of three levels, not just one level.
Right. Well, Warren just said that. You should make that point.
You could take it, K to twelve, skills and attributes yield a Greeley graduate.
Or something, like, it could be built into this Greeley graduate here, but like somewhere, say, K to twelve. So it's, there's a way of even doing that visually, possibly.
But, but something we can talk about.
Yeah, of course. And, um, Adam and I talk with Zach regularly about this, so we can go back and bring him that feedback. He's one of our faculty members. He's actually done a lot of designing for us on this. But one of the things that we continue to think about too is, you know, we, our elementary schools have their own identity.
Right.
Right? Own colors, own, um,
Right, and there was talk of customizing this for the schools.
Mascot.
Falcons, the, Lions, Bears.
And, and you know, you, you want to honor, you want to honor that, but we're also, our plan's all about alignment.
Right.
Right? So where do those things, where is the time for there to be that? You know, I'm a Roaring Brook, Grafflin, West Orchard graduate, right? Going to Bell or Seven Bridges versus we're all a part of one system and what does that mean? So those are future discussions, but I think are really important, too.
Look, look at, look at the week right before graduation. The kids have like a little contest.
Field day.
Color wars.
Yeah.
Between Grafflin and West Orchard.
Well, you know what, what I think about when I, when I look at this is, um, you know, there is the marketing aspect of it, but I think what we really want is for kids to internalize these ideas and see, you know, see all these attributes in themselves and learn, learn them for themselves. So if you have, for instance, a second grader at Grafflin or West Orchard or Roaring Brook, will they be able to identify with it at a developmental level? If they see portrait of a Greeley graduate in the second grade at Grafflin, are they going to feel that, that it's them? So I, I think that, you know, what's most important here is that the child be able to internalize the message and see themselves in it. Right, agree.
Okay.
It's, 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 it's a, that kind of thinking makes us better. So I, I appreciate that you bring that forward, Holly. But I also want to just say, we're nowhere near ready to say, okay, this is what we'll put in our classrooms.
To roll that out, right.
Do you have any other comments about or questions about our presentation? So I just, I want to thank John, right? He organizes us all. He works with his staff and works with the entire administrative team to really put together a comprehensive budget for, for the district, so.
He's a team man.
Yeah, you always say that, but, but you lead that effort and we really appreciate you.
Thank you, John, and it's, it's a long effort, right from the summer.
Right, it never ends.
It's true.
Ongoing, never stops.
About twenty-four seven.
All right.
If you start to, I'd like to just thank, thank everybody, including John, but the whole team, because I do think it's a fiscally responsible proposition, as well as, as Christine said, we have almost everything, amount everything we want. Other, and I, you know, I think that that is a balance. And I think that you've done a terrific job coming up with that balance that you have.
And, and I do appreciate being really fiscally responsible. So I don't want to imply that I think we should go off and spend every single dollar.
No, it's a balance, like you said.
But I, no, I just want to say that. But, um, but I do want to thank you for being, um, very conscientious about, about what you're asking and, and all the planning.
And that concludes the superintendent's report.
Okay.
Great. Will you turn the rest of the lights on? Okay, um, let's move on to community reports. Policy, we're talking about two policies tonight. And we've got some more work on that, so we'll have another policy meeting.
So should we talk about policy when we get to the items?
When we get to policy, right, three point one.
Communication, we have to schedule a meeting. We were supposed to have a meeting, but I, I apologize, I got sick, I couldn't make it. So we have to reschedule a communications.
Right, we were supposed to have something and we'll reschedule something in the near future.
You're allowed to get set.
Yes.
Facilities, we'll talk about, you want to talk about now or during facilities? We're prepared to talk about it at any point you, the president, decide to approve. I'm, I'm allowing you to discuss when you'd like to speak about that, now or later? If you're asking me, I'll do it right now while I have it in front of me. We'll do it right now, then. All right. Generally, three items on the list. Bondex, which is the bonding company for the construction work that was going on at Bell.
And Seven Bridges?
What's that? And Seven Bridges, and Seven Bridges. Seven Bridges was like ninety-something, some, some complete.
Yeah, but they can't open yet.
Right. As, as they say colloquially, their people are talking to our people. Our lawyers are talking to their lawyers. We're targeting an agreement to, for them to take over the work and pay for it all. By the next meeting, which is March eleventh, if not then, the latest would, you know, for us to approve it, I guess would be the March twentieth meeting, but I anticipate it being March eleventh. As a broken record, two, the Zatter property, we don't quite have approval yet. We thought we were going to have it last night.
Sorry to interrupt. This is from the planning board?
This is from the planning board.
Okay, what is the issue?
The issue is that they got a long resolution handed to them. I don't know the exact timing, but sometime pretty close to the meeting. And they did not feel comfortable approving it without having parsed it and read it, et cetera, which is reasonable.
What kind of a resolution?
For them to approve of us having the, pass the planning board hurdles.
Oh, so this was their resolution? It's not a resolution coming from a group, a different group? It's?
No, we have, they, 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 all the.
It's the planning board's resolution to approve the, the, the preliminary approval.
It's their own resolution.
But they didn't put this resolution up until?
But they would just hand it, the resolution at the meeting.
Oh, oh, I understand.
But who was here?
Yeah, who handed it to them? Who did it?
Yeah, who handed the resolution to them? Just kind of like our policy committee, their terms.
The second, their secretary who, who put the resolution together, because it was, they worked at the very end.
Sort of like a resolution that we get to pass here.
But their resolution is not like ours. They were like, I think, five pages.
So it'll probably just get pushed to the next meeting.
So, so they, they already said that they're going to approve it at the next meeting, which is the nineteenth.
Okay.
Maybe they said we don't even have to attend, because they said we're not, that much of a rush.
Right, that meeting is going to start at eight o'clock rather than, um, seven o'clock. So the president actually said, well, you know, we, we scheduled this from eight o'clock to eight oh two. So it's, it's pretty much a done deal.
Okay.
Maybe you should know in case you have questions.
And they told us, we don't have to be there.
God forbid that.
They, they were, they were prepared or they were, they were anticipating closing the, closing the process and voting on it. Because of, and I don't know why it was handed to them so late, but that's the only reason.
Okay, all right.
They have conceptually answered, we have answered every, over seven years, have answered every question everybody asked us. The, the community has had ample time to weigh into both us directly as well as to the planning board. You know, I mean, whatever, it's just another delay on their part. But I don't believe, I don't believe there's anything else that could.
It should be the last one, hopefully.
I don't, I mean, it would take an extraordinary event to, to, and we've had a series of those.
We've had an extraordinary.
It would take an extraordinary event for them to not approve of it at the next meeting. Three, um, I don't know, going back a little bit of history, we, we as a district submitted two different schools to a, to a New York State quasi-agency, quasi-government agency applying for the, the geothermal project. Uh, Seven Bridges was the one school that was picked, one out of, I think there were twenty-five schools picked altogether out of, I think, something like ninety-something that applied. So we're pretty happy that we got picked for it. There's some good news and bad news. I mean, it's, ultimately, we think it'll be the payback for it. And if we, it's like, it's like an energy performance contract in that we'd have to lay out the money, but they're sort of saying that the savings will be paid back over a certain period of time. And the timeframe was actually shorter in the energy performance contract. That's an eighteen year timeframe. And this is somewhere, I think it was eleven years ago. However, um, there's a, and, and it sounds very promising in terms of the particulars of the actual geothermal project from both a savings, from actual heating our, our buildings, as well as from an educational standpoint. You know, we'll be leading the way in terms of going green. One of the first twenty-five, if we would approve it, schools to do this. It's, in terms of that, it's good. The downside, I mean, I don't know about the downside, but the part that we have to consider is that the next step includes a study. This study will cost, um, a hundred and seventy thousand dollars estimated to do the study. So we, there is a chance, and I don't know what the odds are on that, but there is a chance that we do the study and it proves not worth our while to do the entire project, at which point we spent a hundred and seventy grand to find that out, which we ain't getting back.
But they also propose that they will, we'll have stages. At certain point, they will be able to tell us that, you know, it's not going to go right.
Okay, okay.
Right, right. Obviously, if we do, um, if we do decide to go forward, it turns out that the way this thing is financed is that it could be financed by this agency. And they would roll the cost of that, that, um, study, the closing cost of a house into the mortgage. You would roll the cost of the study into, um, the cost of, uh, having the actual geothermal installed. And we pay that off as a bond type, type of payments.
Actually, they put it right into your bill, they said.
Yeah, they were, it would, we actually have a choice. We could pay cash and we pay them off or we roll it into the bill. What's the break even on the site? What's the break even? Uh, the break even was, they, they said eleven years.
Eleven?
I think it's like twelve.
Yeah, well, it's, I mean, my, my guess would have been like fifteen, but that's also what the study will tell us. How much I think we'll save, because there's all sorts of costs. You know, they have to, you have to dig like five hundred feet of the ground and there's all sorts of costs there. The where it would be likely is, uh, on the field, right in front, you know? And ultimately, after they dig it up and they would replace the sod and everything, it wouldn't be a lot of holes. It would be a couple of holes, replace it and it would just be, I think, a box somewhere off the field, obviously. But it really, you would be unnoticed really to, to the naked eye with a covered eye.
Yeah, okay.
And that is.
But, but I think, just the summary is that I think the facilities committee, actually, the five of us, Christine and the two board members and Joe Grumado and myself, we all thought that this is really a very good project to go forward. And so right now, they actually have given us a, an agreement.
They gave us a copy of the contract. David Shaw is, uh, is negotiating with their, or at least Shaw-Purls is negotiating with their lawyers. We're asking questions, clarifying, et cetera. And, and we will present this to the board for the board's approval ultimately. But it would likely be our recommendation that we go through with it.
And, um, Joe was going to present more about this during his, uh,
During his budget presentation or?
Okay.
Yeah.
Good.
Joe's done a lot of work on this too, by the way. He's gone and visited schools that have done, like a community college that did it. He's well aware of all of it. I have a quick facilities question. What's the status of the high school library?
Right now, we're looking at May.
Yeah.
May, so they basically.
They said Thanksgiving, then it was supposed, then it was supposed to be like March, right?
They said Thanksgiving. Wow.
The, the, the issue, there are quite a bit of issues with the long, long lead items, the glass, the doors, so.
Some of the custom items have not been delivered on a timely basis.
All the projects have been delayed and, um,
Why?
Variety of reasons. Some of it has to deal with products coming in late, being delayed. Some of it has to do with the work that's been done on site.
Do we have any recourse? Get anything back from that? Because they're, they're holding us up?
What I'm hearing is that, um, this is what ha, happening across the board with all the public projects.
Okay.
Is this unusually long, though, for a projected, because we're usually closer to, uh?
I, if you ask Joe this question, he would share with you that this is very unusual.
Right.
And after what we experienced this summer with the global learning centers in the elementary schools, he has, um, really inserted himself in managing these projects.
Is it our project manager who's not doing it correctly?
I don't, I don't want to say anyone's not, um, doing their job. What I'm sharing with you is there's multiple reasons why these jobs have, have been delayed the way that they are. And it's been communicated with various people that are working with us that were not happy at the level of progress that's happened over the course of this year.
So again, do we have recourse for this or not?
I think at this point, if you replace any group, it's going to be further delay.
Will, will this affect, though, when we have future projects, what our timeline will be? Or is this an isolated thing? Or is this something that we can anticipate with upcoming projects as well?
But I don't think we have any upcoming project. This is it.
No, but I mean, like if we.
I mean, if it were me, I mean, like when you do your house, they tell you it'll be done by March.
You say, no way.
If I'm in there by June, it'll be real happy, right?
Right, right.
Um, so this is sort of the same sort of thing. I mean, it's, they've made these promises. I don't, I don't see no re, any reason why we shouldn't rely on those promises. It's more commercial type stuff. And these are large companies that are doing it. On the other hand, you know, there's always an excuse. I don't know why this, that. Like you look at, you look at this Bondex, I mean, that's been delayed because the company went back. You know, if, if they were saying we were, if they were saying we're supposed to have this done by November and then they said March, and their long lead items are still outstanding, how'd they ever think November?
That, like Christine said, there are a lot of reasons, a lot of.
Right, there's some of the reasons that we made some design changes in certain cases. Um, in certain cases, things came up that we didn't expect. When Holly and I had to go to Bell over the summer and watch them dig up pipes for the gas lines and stuff.
Right, those science terms.
Some of the things, you know, anytime you open up old buildings' walls and start looking for things, you're going to find things you don't want to find. But I'll tell you, the, the gas lines at, at Bell, they resolved that pretty quickly. They resolved it like a week and a half, two weeks. This, this library really. They resolved it unless we get three classrooms open. If you walk by there, it's still to stud. That's the part that's Bondex has the issue. Okay, just sorry, just.
The library's Bondex?
Well, not Bondex, but the, the construction company that went back.
The library too?
No, not the library here. I'm talking about at Bell. Okay, but I'm talking about the library here. Oh, I don't, that's, I don't. Yeah. All right, I just, I just wanted to raise it because I've been getting a,
A lot of questions.
I just wanted to raise it because I've been getting, you know, a bunch of questions on it.
Actually, I have to.
I can assure you that in the meetings of serious committee meetings I've been in, this is a compliment, Christine. Christine is on these people. She's not like a, you know, I mean, we're, we're doing everything we can. I'm not saying we're not, I'm just expressing concerns I'm hearing.
It's very frustrating.
I think also at some point, again, we can discuss this during communications that, that there might need to be like another push out of information just to let people know what they can anticipate.
Right, right, I think so. That would be helpful.
I think it would be helpful.
Okay.
Anything else? I'd also add that in some cases, they can make up the time. Like obviously not in the library. I mean, the deadline has passed. But there are certain things that are supposed to happen by the end of the summer that they may not be as of March sixth, where they felt they'd be. But there's room in the construction timeline to make it up. So while the library, unless you can spin the world the other way and go back in time, that ain't getting fixed. I think there are certain ones that are behind schedule that still have potential to finish on schedule. Like the steam lab? Steam lab.
Okay.
You know, somebody like a steam lab has weather issues too. Right.
Well, Seven Bridges steam lab's already late, right?
Yeah, the Seven Bridges stuff got ninety-seven percent.
Right, right.
Okay.
We appreciate the flexibility of our Greeley students as we deal with these ongoing issues. I mean, because honestly, the, the students are the ones that are impacted the most and they are so cooperative and understanding.
Well, hopefully the nice weather will come, which will help them more too.
Right.
Okay, um, public comment period. We welcome public comment from anyone in the audience. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes and board members can be contacted either by email or phone. After board, after public comment period is completed, board members may have a discussion amongst themselves regarding comments presented. Are there any public comments? Okay, thank you very much. Approvals and ratifications. Can I get a motion to accept three point one, meetings of February thirteenth, twenty nineteen board meeting?
I'll move.
Go ahead, a second.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, um, three point two, policy sixty thirty, district use of credit cards, second reading.
All right, so what we, oh, are we going to put that up there? Okay. Should we move, move on second? Oh, sorry. I, I move on item three point two.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion.
Okay, so, um, can I start?
When do we move, when do we move on? Do we want to vote on this?
No, no, no.
No, just moving for discussion.
I believe on a policy, we don't need to do that, but I'm. I believe on a policy, we don't need to do that, but I'm...
Okay.
So I, I just, um, the Policy Committee didn't have a chance to meet, right? So what John and David Shaw and I had done was tried to embed the conversation that we had collectively into some adjustments to this policy, um, but you'll notice in the agenda, we didn't put the language under it to move on it for adoption, because I know that there's still some concerns about, um, the district credit card that need to be fleshed out. But what I thought would be helpful is if we looked at some of the adjustments, um, that we were able to make, to see if this, um...
Six oh three oh.
If this, um, met some of the concerns that were expressed.
Can I ask a favor? You know what, there's one thing I'd like to do with this, um, with this policy, and I know that, you know, we have, um, review of the claims auditor here, but I'd like the internal auditor to take a look at this, just to tell us if we have enough controls.
Sure.
Um, you know, rather than wait for the whole auditing process to take place and then hear about it later. Just, um, you know, contact, unless, Christine, you had a chance to do that.
No.
Just to get feedback from, from, from that auditor, and, um...
Okay, so, so let me talk about what we, we did.
Can I ask a question, though? When we get this in the future, can we get a redlined copy of it in our materials? Because I had to go back, like, we didn't, we didn't get this redlined. That would be helpful, though, thank you. I appreciate that.
All right, so we made two, um, adjustments. So we changed the ten thousand dollar limit to a five thousand dollar limit per person per event, based on your feedback, and then we added the review of the claims auditor in the approval process.
There's the red line first.
It was?
Yeah, it's, it's online now. It's very how I have it, but here it is.
But I looked online, okay, but it's not in the book, that's weird. Okay, my apologies.
So, what I, I think probably would be best for us to do next is that Warren, Vicky and I will meet before we place this on the agenda again. So, um, if there are any comments that people want to make now, or discussion that you want, um, us to hear prior to a meeting, we can do that. We can also receive comments in writing from the board, and I know Jeff has requested some information that we're gathering, um, that we'll send out to the whole board about some of our current practices, and, um, some other information about, um, the, uh, process by which people are reimbursed. So we're in the process of collecting that information, so...
Well, I, I thought that if we were, if, if, um, someone had significant questions, I know Jeff, you have, um, some questions, that we all talk about those questions together. I mean, someone else might have, have feedback about the question, or the answers that we may have, and so I, I thought it was better to have a public, um, discussion of the questions, rather than have those be in writing.
Well, I think we can get them back in writing. Christine and John can take a look at answering those, get them out to us, and we can have a discussion at the next board meeting.
It was suggested by Vicky, and that was a good suggestion, that I read these things. I'll be happy to read them, or I'd be happy not to, if you come up to.
Well, yeah, I thought, I thought this should be done in common, you know.
I'm prepared to do it. If you think it's better just to get the answers to them and be able to respond to them on a timely basis, then I'll be happy to, uh, wait. It's up to you.
Well, what, you know what, why don't you, I think you should ask your questions here, and if there's some questions that we have to go back...
I think if I ask my questions here, I think the answers should be public, too.
Absolutely.
Yeah, but, yeah, I find it's to have a public discussion. Well, I, actually, I think it depends on a lot of what those questions are, right? Because I, I'm not, I don't feel comfortable talking about employees and, and what they can or cannot be reimbursed for out of pocket, and so I, I think, um, you know, I, I think the, um, I have no problem with, uh, Jeff or anyone else asking questions, I just think that based on what those questions are, maybe some of those answers might not be...
I thought they were general questions, not...
So why don't we, why don't we get the data back from Christine and John? We can bring it up at the next meeting.
What, what data?
Christine and John said they're gonna re, uh, look at, look at some of the...
If there's some of the questions asked for the data, like, how many times did this happen?
Right. So why don't we, why don't we get the, the data from Christine and John?
One of the questions was, has, has our, has our auditors appined on it, just like you asked?
And then we can, we can, at the same time, we can ask the auditors to opine on it, and then we can bring it back, and then read the questions and see if everyone's okay.
I, I thought the claims auditor might have opined, because that was added too, but I, you know, I just mentioned the internal auditor as well.
Is everyone, is everyone comfortable with that?
I, I sent the email, I was, because I was comfortable sending an email with these questions. I do agree with Christine that there are certain things that aren't appropriate for public, uh, thing, regardless of the sunshine laws and, you know, but, um...
So I, I would actually, I'd, I'd like to ask that Jeffrey does read his questions, but that we use a little discretion in what answers, um, we put out that are, uh, that might jeopardize somebody's, uh...
What answers we cut out publicly, or what answers we cut out altogether?
Well, why don't we...
I can't imagine why we would have to discuss any individuals.
I can't either.
But if Christine's not comfortable with something, then I, I think that we wouldn't wanna do that, but I would like to recap the questions.
I could also just post the email on, in my blog, newcastlealternate.com. If you want, reach me by phone, nine one four eight four zero two two three three.
Jeff, um, why don't you go down your list, and then, well, and some are, some of them are very easy for us to answer, and other ones, I'll have to, I'll get back to the whole board, so go ahead.
I'm gonna read them?
Yeah.
Uh, when you refer to, when you refer to administrators, are you referring to the ed center administrators or building administrators?
Yeah, I think I would get back to...
Uh, specifically, how many times has this come up? I think it's important to quantify the issue. As I have said, I've not heard of this before. Is it one, two, three, or more times? And then if, however many times it come up, what were the dollar amounts involved? Um, I asked about the ten thousand dollars per transaction limit proposed, it's, you know, that's subject to somewhat moot, now it's a, you know, it's, because it's five thousand dollars. Um, you mentioned as examples in, in your memo to us, plane fares and hotel fares, and I was trying to understand what type of conferences administrators flying to and at what cost. Um, what is the process and timeframe for an employee to get reimbursed for approved travel, and, and conference attendance? You know, I, I don't know how that works. If, if, if I go somewhere on, on this weekend, and I put in for reimbursement on Monday, is it gonna take me six months to get paid back? Is it gonna take me six hours? I don't know. Um, if employee, okay, so then, well, the, the details are in the email. For any travel or conference-type expense, who pays for non-refundable costs in the event of a cancellation? Um, and, and is it, is it a function of the reason for the cancellation? Um, does the district use any other payment method besides a check or cash, such as something like ZELLA? I don't know if that's how you pronounce it, Z-E-L-L-A. Kids nowadays. Or, or similar, a lot of, lot of transfer. Why or why not? And then, as Vicky also asked, has the audit committee or auditors appined on the wisdom of this? Um, okay, now, some of the things from the corporate world. If an employee travels for CCSD, who gets any frequent fire or frequent customer-type credits? Um, the district or the employee? And what happens if we get them on that credit card? Well, you know, that's an asset of the district. Um, you mentioned that costs can be over a thousand dollars. What is the average cost of these layout expenses? Or what are the actual costs of these? Um, then, then if you look at policy, uh, it, it refers to, uh, policy six zero nine five, which is a separate policy, is really the associated regulation on how you would pay for reimbursements and whatnot, although it's not clear on the process. Um, I'm just wondering if any of those things need to be modified to adjust to this. And then we talk about, this is for people who can't front it. Is it, is, are we gonna require everybody to, uh, use the credit card to, uh, do this travel? Or are we just gonna, or are we gonna penalize the people that can't afford to front it? And just only the people who can't afford get to use the credit card? I mean, maybe it should be, everybody should be using these credit cards for tracking purposes. Um, and then there are, there are four different types of approvals listed in this policy. Uh, I don't know if it's the policy, the regulation of six oh, six zero nine five. Um, and I'm just wondering if this credit card applies to all of those. Um, does it apply, does the use of the card apply to all employees working on district matters, and does that include the BOE members? I mean, I think it does, but, um, and then, just a simple, general question, are there any questions or issues that were considered while you formed this policy that I have not, that I've not come up with, and, and, you know, what else was the Policy Committee considering when they decided that this was an appropriate policy? Now, the purpose for these questions was, was really one fault, was for me to make a decision or a judgment on whether this is the greatest idea in the world, and it could quite possibly be a great, um, thing to get a credit card, or whether I wanna propose an alternative to it to solve the problem. And I'm trying to understand what the actual problem is that prompted, um, the, the decision to switch our policy a hundred and eighty degrees from no credit card to credit card, or somewhere in between. You know, maybe this is, is a compromise, or maybe there's just some, a few words I wanna change on this policy, and that was really it.
So, you know, Christine, could you explain to, I'm sorry, the, just the simple reason why you wanted us to consider this policy? And we talked about that the last time, at the first meeting.
Right, um, so, there's been a, a few incidents where, um, I know that the cost of the conference has been a hardship for, um, members of our staff to pay for in advance and then go through the reimbursement process. So I was trying to think of a different pathway in order to support people, so it wouldn't create an unnecessary hardship for them for a temporary period of time. I think that a lot of Jeff's questions should be answered and will help us move forward in, in, in a, in the right direction, whatever that is, so we just need some time to be able to put all that information together, because it's, some of those questions are simple, but some of them are not. So, um, we need a little bit more time in order to present to you that information, which I think you should all have. So, but in the meantime, we wanted to take the work that we had done and try to memorialize it in some way for the second reading.
Right.
So...
Well, I, I wanna also publicly thank everybody who, um, for, I mean, I, I sent down an email, uh, that's, I don't even remember when I sent it down, requesting that we have at least a third reading, or we take it off the agenda, because I, I was concerned that I hadn't gotten the answers to these questions. I thank everybody here, um, who graciously can, gave me the courtesy of that request.
Well, you know, we're not gonna move on something if we don't think we have...
Right.
I mean, we could, but why would we do that? I think we need to have, make sure everyone has their questions answered. Even if your question's answered, you don't agree with the answer, you don't wanna vote yes or no, or any of us don't want to, but I think we all have to have the ability to ask questions and have them answered to the best of our ability, and then we, then we make a determination whether we wanna vote or not.
Exactly.
Okay, so this is, I guess this is tabled, Phil?
Well, no, so do we...
There's no vote, there's no vote.
We just decide half a third.
Third reading.
So do we have to vote on having the third reading?
No.
No, I think what we'll do is, um, we'll...
Lisa, no?
Uh, we'll get the information, we've already started compiling it out to the board, and then, um, take some time to look at it, and then get feedback to Warren and Vicky, so we could meet prior to the next meeting on the twentieth. So we'll probably be able to have the information that Jeff requested by Friday. So then we have the second policy, right?
Second, uh, item three point three, policy seventy thirty, smoking tobacco use prohibition, second reading and adoption. Be resolved, the Board of Education hereby adopts policy seventy thirty, smoking and tobacco use prohibition. Do I have a motion to accept three point three?
Uh, I will move, um, item three point three.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Can we have a discussion now?
All right, so we, with that policy, um, the adjustments we had to make were...
I have to leave this afternoon.
So this is, uh, we had to make some regulatory adjustments based on changes in the law.
My fault, I should've...
So, um, this policy, the conversation centered around taking out the board-specific responsibility for certain aspects of this, um, policy and the administration of it. So, um, in those areas, we changed it to the district. So we're required to do, um, all that's within this policy, but instead of making it a board responsibility, we made it a district responsibility.
Okay.
That makes sense.
That makes sense, right, because we all had a question about the use of the word, like, board, like, what are we supposed to be doing here? Right, I got you. Thank you for changing that.
So I, I think this is probably ready for adoption.
Me too.
Yep.
Any additional questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I recommend four point one instructional as presented.
I move that we accept a superintendent's recommendation of item four point one as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, we just wanna congratulate Maureen for retiring, um, as our chorus, which her horse really high school.
Been a long time.
We'll celebrate her in, uh, in June at our, in our retiree ceremony, so, um, I present four point two non-instructional as presented.
I also move item four point two, uh, non-instructional as presented by the superintendent.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, um, can I get a motion for five point one and five point two together? CSEU summaries reported the board on March sixth, uh, twenty nineteen, for the eighteen, nineteen, uh, school year and for the nineteen twenty school year.
I'll move five point one and five point two, so, I'll second.
Yep.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, item five point three, views of the Board of Education approves an agreement for services with Mary Connolly for health curriculum professional development for the school year twenty nineteen twenty nineteen at a rate of a hundred and twenty-five dollars per hour, not to exceed twenty hours, authorizes the board president to agree, this agreement.
I'll move five three.
I'll second five three. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item five point four, be resolved, the Board of Education approves a contract for health and welfare services with the Somers Central School District for one student at the rate of one thousand one hundred ninety-three dollars and six cents per student for the twenty eighteen twenty nineteen school year, and authorizes the president, superintendent, and district clerk to execute the contract.
Uh, I would actually like to move five four, five five, and five six, which are all very similar.
I know, I was wondering if we could move those together.
So I would do move those.
We can, okay, um, so five four is with Somers, five five is with Harrison for one thousand four dollars and thirty-three cents, and five six is with Ossining for eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars and thirty-seven cents. Can I get a motion for four, five, five, four, five, four, five, four, five, five, and five six?
I'll move it again.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yes. How about we have a consent agenda?
Which Jeffrey will not like to do, but-
I, I was a consent agenda.
Think about that. Which is similar to doing what we're doing here. Consolidating items while keeping them on the agenda and acknowledging them, allowing people to request taking certain items out of the consent agenda for further discussion, or allowing discussion within the consent agenda for any item.
Well, we have a motion-
But if you just take the whole business section-
We have discussions about all sorts of suggestions.
Hold on, we have a motion right now, Vicky, for 4, 5, 4, 5, 5, and 6. So let's-
And we have a second for-
We have a second. So this is not really a discussion.
You're right, yeah.
Right. Any discussion-
But there's never an opportunity, so I took it.
Any discussion regarding these, these three items? All in favor? Regarding consent agenda, we can discuss that during, maybe next, meeting, early during the president's report, we can have a discussion-
Let's talk at least about what it is and what it isn't.
And what, why don't I want to do it?
Okay.
Okay. Item 5.7, be resolved, the Board of Education approves the agreement between Chapco Central School District and the County of Westchester for the use of electronic voting machines, including technicians and privacy booths for the May 21, 2019 annual vote, and authorizes the board president to execute this agreement. Item 5.7.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yee-haw.
All in favor?
Aye.
5.8, be resolved, the Board President, the Board of Education approves the agreement between this Chapco Central School District and Life Fees Moving and Storage dated for the delivery and retrieval of voting machines and privacy booths for the May 21, 2019 annual budget date and election.
I'll move 5.8.
Sec.
Any discussion?
It's interesting. They make us use these specific machines in there. And they make us use their moving company.
Right, yeah.
Well, and the fact that-
That's a poor barrel.
The fact that, before, we used to move these, I think it cost us next to nothing for a vote, because we had our own voting machines, and then, I'm not sure if it's the county or the state who's requiring us to use their very expensive machines.
All I can say is follow the money. Somewhere, there's something not right about this.
Why the next one?
They were buying new machines.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote no.
All right.
I don't like the fact that-
Just to make the difference.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
He's voting no on that one.
Four yes, I'm voting no. I don't want them-
If we all tip our vote, all of a sudden.
All right. Item 5.9, where is the Board of Education Chapco Central School District and the Board of Education is proposing a project consisting of certain alterations, reconstruction, renovations, including replacement of equipment at the Robert E. Bell Cafeteria, including incidental costs related therefore to the proposed action, and where is the Board of Education proposes to proceed, the proposed action wishes to take all actions necessary in connection therefore, therewith in order to comply with the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECRE, and where is the Board of Education has reviewed the proposed action with respect to type two criteria set forth in SECRE regulations at 6 NYCRR Part 617.5, has determined that the proposed action type two, action pursuant to Section 617.5C1, maintenance or repair involving no substantial changes in the structure facility and/or a routine activities of educational institutions of the SECRE regulations. Therefore, be resolved that the Board of Education and Chapco Central School District determines the proposed action, including each and all the components, is type two action pursuant to 617.5C1 and/or a of the SECRE regulations, and will not have any significant environmental impacts. The contact person for the Chapco Central School District is John Chow, Assistant Superintendent of Business.
Can we combine 5.9, 5.10, and 5.11?
That one, we might have a legal issue with combining, like the SECREs, I don't know.
Yeah, I think they have to go in.
Do they have to go separately?
I don't think we have to read them all.
Right, right, okay, okay.
I think we should, we should keep them separate.
Okay, okay.
So, do I have a motion for 5.9?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Is this the way it's going to go on the?
No, next item, that's similar now.
No, what is going on?
I'm sorry, okay, right. No, 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 of course not, sorry, yeah. That's my next question.
This is environmental.
Yes, I understand, so I'm getting ahead of you.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. 5.10, 10, I won't read, but it's basically similar. It just says, it states that maintenance or repair involving no substantial, substantial change in the existing structure facility, replacement, rehabilitation, reconstruction of structure facility in kind on the same site, including build, upgrade buildings to meet building or fire codes unless action needs exceeds any of the thresholds in 614.7 at this part. Do I have a motion for 5.10?
I move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
How will it be worded on the ballot?
So, 5.12.
Later on, 5.12.
It says proposition. Oh, yes, there it is.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
5.11, similar regarding, this is regarding Seven Bridges and-
I move item 5.11.
And Douglas Grafflin, and Roaring Brook, and West Orchard.
So, the person traps.
Pardon me?
The person traps.
Right, this is for the, the security for the person's traps.
That's right, this is separate for the person's traps.
So, basically, we're going to do a SECRE, and we're all going to agree that we're going to determine based on the law. So we have a motion 5.11. Do I have a second 5.11?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Something we need-
Who moved it?
I did.
Oh, just it, I'm sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
5.12, Vicky, this is the, what's going to be on the ballot. So, I guess, I can, I can just read that part. Again, this doesn't affect any tax, this is just moving money.
Right.
So the proposition is that Bell School Cafeteria improvements shall the Board of Education and Chap-
This is all sorry.
Pardon me?
Nothing.
Chapco Central School District, Westchester County, New York, be authorized to perform certain alteration, reconstruction, renovation work, including replacement of the equipment at Cafeteria Robert E. Bell School, including its inelaborate expenses at a maximum expenditure of $390,000, with the amount up to $190,000 to be transferred from the fund balance in the school district lunch fund as of June 30, 2019, for the capital fund to pay for the costs of such project. The remaining amount will pay through inter-fund transfers to the capital fund and general fund budgets for the 2018, 2019, and 2019, 2020 school years. And then also with that is that shall the Board of Education Chapco Central School District, Westchester County, New York, be authorized to perform certain safety and security alteration, reconstruction improvements at the Robert E. Bell and Seven Bridges Middle Schools, Douglas Grafflin, Roaring Brook, West Orchard Elementary Schools, including but not limited to building access, entrance renovations, reconstruction, installation, repair, and upgrades of building access controls and security measures, including incidental expenses at a maximum expenditure of $1.35 million, with the amount of up to $1.35 million to be transferred from an unassigned fund balance for the 2018, 2019 school year to pay, to the capital fund to pay for the cost of such project. Be resolved, the school district clerk is hereby authorized and directed to include those propositions and the legal notice at the annual meeting of May 21, 2019. Publish legal notice in the board designated newspapers of the district four times within a seven-week period to the annual meeting. Do I have a motion for 5.12? I'll put this on the ballot.
I'll move.
Do I have a second for 5.1?
I'll share why this has to be on this agenda today. There's a time clock on this, in terms of advertising the proposition publicly, so that's why this can't wait until the April meeting, it has to be on today.
That's fine.
And is it, are there, what happens if there's a change? There's no, there's no changes, this is it.
No, this is it, but it's not going through the feedback process that the, the general budget is because of the timeframe that we have to do this within, to comply with the law.
And it's not costing it, it's not-
No.
We're not going, it's not a budget item.
It's not a change, like, nothing will change.
It's not a budget item.
Right.
It's a calendar, it has to be on, it has to be approved by a certain number of calendar days before the vote.
Yes, yes.
And because we're basically just asking the, the community to help, to let us move money.
When we put a similar proposition on the budget the last, on the ballot the last time, did we put in that it would not affect the tax levy?
We have some kind of language.
I may be misremembering. So, is it possible to do that here? Would it be in the, it, where would that be on the ballot? I mean, not within the quoted language, but is, can it be somewhere on the ballot?
No, it has to be in our publication.
Okay, but not on the ballot?
But we wouldn't be able to put that in the resolution.
Why not?
I, I'm trying to remember whether it happened the last time. I thought it did, but I may, may not be remembering correctly.
Yeah, this was written by our ballot council?
This is written by David Shaw.
But he wrote the previous week?
Lisa Ross.
It's from there.
He's from there.
Can we pick this up on Monday?
You know-
Does anyone remember who was here?
I think the last time-
I don't remember, but I don't remember for sure.
I think last time we did have language with that.
I thought so. I can't say for sure.
Can we pick this up on Monday, or is that too late?
We can wait till Monday, because it has to be 45 calendar days before the vote.
Are you comfortable with that? Waiting these extra days?
May 21st, that's 21 days. If we do it before April, we're good.
What about this?
Anytime before April.
You, you can approve this, and then if we need to amend it, we can have-
Oh, we can amend it, okay, so just to be safe then-
So, so we can take a look at it on Monday.
Let me just ask you this question. You want more language in there than unassigned fund balance?
No.
I think we should look at last year's, and if there's language on last year's or the previous year's-
The previous year.
That when people go to the vote, it doesn't affect their-
Yeah.
Make sure we make it clear to the public what they're actually voting on.
And it didn't affect-
Some people won't read, you know, they won't necessarily have a chance to read what we published beforehand, they'll just go to the, you know, go to vote and take a look at the proposition.
It's like an additional fund.
Yeah. All right, so you're looking for language that says that this does not impact the tax levy.
Well, I think we can do that, and we can also look at the language you use when we, when we approve the cafeteria fund balance move.
For Greeley.
For Greeley.
So why don't we do this? If, if you are able to-
Approve this as amended to add that language.
We will go back and do the research and then come back.
We prove it as it is, and we approve an amendment at the next meeting.
Okay.
Actually, there's, there's something we should change now.
All right, well then give it to, suggest-
What, what would you like to change?
In the second proposition, it says security alternation, but we may not say alteration.
I don't know about the word alteration, maybe that's accurate.
I don't know.
Where's the alteration?
Definitely look at that word.
To perform certain safety and security alter, it should be alteration, there's an extra N.
Oh, yeah.
I think I'm going to form my own alteration.
So we can approve it now with that amendment for the typo.
Right, and then we, then we can hope, if we need to-
If we have to, if we look at the language and it's different, we can adjust it on Monday.
So we have two, John, we have the cafeteria from Greeley, and we have the-
Well, both of them will have-
The same language.
It's the same language.
No, no, but the other one, we have the, when we move the field, I think the language in there was something-
No, no, no.
The field one might have had that language.
The field one might have, that's what I'm thinking.
I'm pretty sure.
It was either cafeteria or the field, I can't remember which one.
I think it was the field one saying that it was no difference.
The field one said it wasn't going to change the price of the bond.
Right, but I think the cafeteria might have also said that there was no-
It might be it. Anyway, let's just look into it.
Just take a shot.
So let's, we can approve this, and it may not need to change, depending on what we discovered.
So, do I have a motion to approve 5.12 as amended to, to, to create, to not create an alteration?
I move as amended.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
5.13, be resolved, the Board of Education hereby approves Josh Colow Block to Newcastle Community Center, NCCMC, for two-year term beginning February 1, 2019, through May 31, 2021.
I move item 5.13.
I will second 5.13. Any discussion?
We love Josh.
I have one question.
Okay.
Does Josh know what we're getting him to make?
He actually met with him.
He's in Washington.
Apparently, yeah. Well, he was out of town.
Slipped you right in there.
He got the short straw, and he wasn't even here.
You go to Washington, okay, well, we had something for you.
You're in.
He already met with the board.